Okay, and I'd like to welcome everybody. The first order will be the public hearing. And so Bill, I'll turn it over to you.
Do I have the public hearing?
Yes, yes.
Well, the included in the packet is a resolution that authorizes the blight program between Sean and, involving Sean and Nicky. Tiffany and I happen to know they're here because I met them on the way in. As part of that, then, there's a separate statement of assurances and certifications, which are required under both the Kansas Act, which was from 1955, and also the federal provisions that regulate this. Those have been prepared for the mayor's signature. And there's also a Kansas Department of Revenue, a determination level review, which basically is an environmental required document. And that has been prepared by city staff, probably.
No, it's by Rosemary Saunders, the person that's the administrator for the grant.
Oh, okay, good. Yeah, has prepared it. She could, of course, speak to any of the particulars that you might have in that regard. And then finally is the agreement between Sean and Tiffany, or Sean and Nicole Tiffany and the city.
There's a former resolution when they're billed. There's one for legal authority and then the blight, because of blight, I believe, she's been the first one on that.
Yeah, I think so.
There should be two resolutions within the interlocal agreement.
I think, maybe there, yeah, yes, there is. That's right, I skipped over the first one, didn't I?
Yep.
The first resolution certifies the authority to apply, which is prepared for the mayor's signature, and it's pretty straightforward in the states, you know, that the city has the legal authority to conduct this matter. These things are just pretty much boilerplate. They've been done many times before, using almost the identical language each time. And any, this program's been around for a long time, so this language has evolved to where it is today. And if you want to do the program, I recommend that you adopt the resolutions and agreements that are contained within the, within the packet.
Okay. Do I hear any, would anybody like to address that? Is Max on the phone, too?
Mark Burner and Jason Booker.
On Max today. Okay. Jason, they're both on the phone?
Yes.
Okay.
So the first thing we need to do is approve one resolution, second resolution, and then the interlocal agreement.
Okay.
To accept it.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the first resolution?
So moved.
Okay.
I will second it.
Okay. Moved and seconded to approve the first resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the block grant program, the development block grant program. All those in favor?
They should be over here.
Jason, okay. Mark?
Yes.
Okay. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. Okay.
And that resolution number is 040621-01.
Okay. Okay. Then the next resolution is declaring a bill invited with respect to the Kansas small cities for the community development block grant program. Do I hear a motion concerning that?
Still moved.
Okay. Seconded. Been moved and seconded to approve that resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries six zero.
And that resolution number is 040621-02.
Okay. Okay, and then we have the...
Interlocal agreement, which is the last.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the interlocal agreement? So is, okay.
All seconded.
All right. Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the interlocal agreement. Do sign in with that. For Sean and Nicole Tiffany. All those in favor?
Aye.
Was that Jason or was that one?
That was both of us.
Okay. Okay, motion carries six zero. Very good. Now, that would be, is that all of them, the three?
Thank you.
That's it. Okay, so they're ready to go, then. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Madam Mayor, Rosemary Saunders from Ransum Financial. There are some other forms in addition, like the statement of assurances and certifications and the anti-displacement plan that we need you to sign on, too, even though it doesn't require council action.
Okay.
Yeah, I have those in the packet. I have stuff for her to sign after the council meeting.
Okay.
Once I get it, I'll get in contact with you.
Okay.
That was one of the documents you voted to authorize the mayor to...
Glad you're with me. Okay. Yes, lots of paperwork, I remember. We both used to be more. Okay. We are now ready for the public comment period.
You have that sheet there.
Uh-huh, and Dan?
Good evening.
Do you want to come up here to the mic?
If I have to, I will.
For the people at home?
So, you're fine there. You're fine.
I'm here? Okay.
Yeah.
I'm here tonight with the request for community events application for daddy-daughter date night sponsored by Chapter J and P E O. We are asking, we always, this event, we always kind of try to piggyback off of prom. Prom will be the night before at the Riverwalk, and I believe you've approved that application. We would like to use the same setup, use the tent, invite the daddies and the daughters to come and have an hour and a half of snacks and fun. It's our fundraiser, our money goes, all of our money that we make goes back to women's education, every bit of it. Angie and Debbie have both been a part of P E O, and maybe, have you? No? But it's really a fun event. I have filled out the application hopefully correctly with the security plan and cleanup, and would like for you to consider that favorably.
That's at 4:00 p.m., right? Four to 5:30, is that correct?
It's four to 5:30.
Okay. The actual event, the setup will take place a little earlier.
Well, the setup, actually, we're kind of lazy. We just kind of come in there and put it back together. We come at not, at 10 o'clock when the prom's over and make sure we carry stuff off that people might borrow. And then we'll show up a little bit ahead of time and get it all backed up for the little girls and their dads, and it's, yeah, it's kind of a, it's kind of a sweet deal.
Yep, they, the little girls love it. They wear their little prom dresses.
And the other thing, typically, we've done $15 a family unit. This year, we decided because of the pandemic that we're going to just ask for a donation. So, we thought that would be best. Any questions?
Good deal.
Do I hear a motion concerning?
Still moved.
Okay.
Yippee skippy, thank you.
Thank you.
Second?
All seconded.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
We'll go blasted on Facebook now.
Okay. Motion carries six zero. I think it's already been blasted, I've seen it several times. It's a fun thing, a lot of people go to that, it's fun. Okay, let's go to the consent agenda. Minutes from the previous meeting, the appropriations and late heaven transfer for R02. Do I hear a motion concerning the consent agenda?
I think in the minutes, it was Barbara Bowman and not, I've forgotten what it was, but the first name is wrong, I think.
Oh, okay.
If you guys see that, just email me and I can get it corrected.
I just, doesn't it say?
Is Darcy Bowman?
Yeah, it says Darcy.
It should say Barbara?
It's Barbara Bowman.
Okay. Okay.
Otherwise, I move we...
Why did I miss that?
Accept the consent agenda as presented.
All seconded.
Okay. Sharon and Keith? All those in favor? Okay?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries six to zero. Very good. Moving forward, does CTS update, Nick?
So, we did our walk, final inspection walkthrough last Wednesday with CTS and Jack Barr, both services unlimited. They had their engineer from CTS come down and inspect everything. Everything was fine. It's for the water meters, we have a few that the city will have to install because there was issues with shut-off valves that were broke. Meters that are in homes where people have not allowed us to go in and change a meter have not responded to their request to do so. So we have a list of, I think it's probably 15 to 20 meters that the city's going to have to install ourselves. But other than that, everything is, is good to go, one up front.
And is there kind of a schedule set up for that, to do the ones?
Derek has a list, he has, he's going to get into it. Right now, what's going on is, we can get it all still done in a day, reading those meters by hand, and then the other ones, you drive around and they upload really quickly and you're done. So we're hand-reading those right now until Derek gets done. He's installing a sewer manhole behind Adams and Jesse's building over there. They got a couple other water services they have to fix, so once they get that taken care of, they're going to tackle that.
Okay. Okay.
And can you give us an update, a reminder, what kind of warranty are on these meters?
20 years.
20 years.
I think the batter, the meter body and everything's 20 years, the battery thinks, got 10 or 15-year warranty on the battery.
All righty.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. North Riverwalk Extension update?
They are starting on that tomorrow, so they, the survey crew is here. You've probably, I don't know if anybody's drove down through there, they got, they're going to have traffic control starting, I think, tomorrow. So people driving down Bowser Street need to be aware that they may come to a stop, have to come to a stop. So that starts tomorrow, so yeah, they're breaking down tomorrow. One thing I'll tell you about the project is, is that the contractor for the electrical won't get here till the end of June, beginning of July, to install the light poles and electrical stuff, because they're on another project that won't finish until the end of June. But Brian, Brian was available because another project with RF Beachers running behind, and they had nowhere to go. So I figured it's probably best to get the sidewalk done, and then we have the electrical in this summer, so that's what they're going to do.
Okay, so we don't really...
You said, like, Nick?
Yes, what?
Did Nick say that was late June for the electric?
Late June, early July.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
You know, in the plans, if there is in mind to put some ballards at this end down here?
Not that I'm aware of, Mark.
For that, we do have kind of a, around here, temptation to have motorized vehicles to use our trail.
I was actually thinking about that today when I stopped over there, because that, they put up that fence over there, cranged fence, it's in the wrong spot. Because I was like, wait a minute, you guys took out the loop down to the old dam, and they're like, no, no, no. The people put it in the wrong spot, so they got to move that. But when I was over there, I was thinking about that, that ballard right there, so people can't drive their side-by-sides or whatever down the road. So I'll talk to Brian, Brian, about that tomorrow, we're going to have the concrete work.
And maybe it would be handy if we would have our social media girls and Marcus put out that there's going to be traffic stops on dialing, right?
It's going to be on Bowser Street, yeah. So I will, ever reached out to Deidre and them, so...
Yeah, and then maybe Marcus, you put that in yourself.
Yep.
I think that's important, because, you know, people like...
Well, I didn't know when they were starting traffic control, so I just found that out today, so...
So, that sounds good, okay. All right, new business community events application for the disc golf club? That's not...
I submitted the application for parking. We are planning on running the shuttle from the baseball field up to Kansasview, so I kind of drew the best I could for a map, just showing basically that we would try to park the same as they do during baseball and softball games. We will have some, two or three parking guides at a time directing where everybody can park, so they would also learn security and cleanup throughout the day. And then, and I wanted to point out on number six, so I will be working in Emporia a number of those days, but Jeremy Thibodeau is the president of Council Grove Disc Golf Club, so he can be contacted. And then Brian Shuntaku is the event coordinator through Dynamic Disc, so he'll be able to be there as well, yeah. And then the other thing was, when we have the little music event Wednesday evening, we would like to have it, if possible, inside this soccer-filled area solely for the fact of being able to run security where all entrances are to kind of try to guarantee no underage drinking throughout there.
But the application that Max submitted didn't have that.
Oh, did it?
Max already submitted an application, but it was not on the soccer field, it was over by the shelter house by the pool. And he had a plan on how he was going to do that already.
Okay, well, who has Max's plan?
So, I'm just saying, that's what's been approved for that portion of it. Max came and talked to the council, and Max had his security plan in place, and he was just...
Fantastic.
So... What time of day will that be?
Um, on Wednesday, that's going to be, I believe it starts at 6:00 and 6:00 to 9:00.
So that will be good, because it will have a cover there.
6:00 to 9:00 or 6:00 to 10:00.
Yeah, I think you said 6:00 to 9:00, but may run till 10:00. And then also, so we'll be doing cleanup throughout, and then the next morning, first thing, we'll go over and finish cleaning up everything.
Okay. So, did Max basically submit everything that we need?
Yeah, everything was taken care of for Max. I talked to Sean, he doesn't have an issue with it.
So we really don't need to approve it?
We don't need to approve that, yeah, that's already been approved. Max came and had his form, his liquor license number to sell alcohol and do the whole event over there by the shelter house.
Okay, so we don't really need to vote on anything tonight, as far as?
No, just allowing her to use the parking.
Just allowing the parking?
Yeah, that is not something, that was not something Max was responsible for.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to allow the parking for the disc golf club?
Still moved.
Okay.
All seconded.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to allow the parking for the community events application, on the community, community events application for the Council Grove Disc Golf Club. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You guys both say an aye?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
What's the guest amount of attendance, maybe, for this?
For just people in town or for the party?
Participants, I guess.
Um, there will be 88 different people brought in on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, playing out at Kansasview. And so they're going to run every seven minutes a new tee-off, every seven minutes.
Teams or individuals?
Eight players.
Eight players.
Yeah, individuals. And then they'll have caddies. And then on this Sunday, it's the flex tier, so that could bring in hundreds, like, a lot of people.
Good.
Yeah, it's, it's really exciting for the town. I'm really excited for us to get started.
Sure.
And let people know that us disc golfers are clean and take care of the place.
Have you visited with the Chamber of Commerce about getting to the businesses and getting some advertising out there?
I have, and she's been working with me, she's amazing. We're struggling on getting volunteers. I would really like for the community to try to help out a little bit more. It's like refilling water jugs or parking, doing the parking attendant and stuff like that. I have posted a link, though, and I gave it to Susan to hand out, and I think she sent it to all the chamber members.
Okay.
I think.
You might get, Nick can get ours, get that on our social media page, too, the volunteers would be welcome.
Perfect.
Okay.
Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, next, the sales tax grant committee recommendations.
I can go through them, or Keith can go through them. Can we go through them, Keith?
Sure, unless you want a break.
No, I'm good. So, we got Sales Tax Grant Committee meeting last Wednesday. The first application was from the Council Grove Morris County Chamber of Commerce and Tourism. The committee, the request was for $20,000 in sales tax grant funds. The committee approved that request barring the council approval, or granted the request.
How do you guys want to handle this? Do you want to look at all of them at one time?
You're going to have to go through all of them at one time, because they're all for different amounts.
Each, we have to vote on each one?
Yes.
As they come, or hear all of them and then vote on them?
Well, you need to vote on them individually, because you may not agree on all of them.
I understand, that's why I'm saying, though...
I would vote on each one as I go through it.
As we go through?
Yes.
Is that okay with everybody here?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay. So, do I hear questions about this?
Yeah, just for the public, what's this $20,000 for?
Marketing.
Marketing is what it's for, for the city council?
I'm not asking it for me, I'm asking...
I know, I know, yeah, I got you, my problem.
It says marketing, and they have to...
Yeah, it's for marketing of Council Grove.
And that's for the first of the year, until the end of December this year, '21?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you need a motion? I move we approve the $20,000 to the Council Grove Morris County Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
All seconded.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation of the Sales Tax Grant Committee to give the Council Grove Morris County Chamber of Tourism a $20,000 grant for marketing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mark? Jason? Okay. Motion carries six zero. Okay, and then we go to the next one, Washunga Days?
Yep, so the Washunga Days Committee requests $19,000 in sales tax funding. The Sales Tax Grant Committee voted to recommend the approval of the grant request for sales tax grant funds to the city council. And that is for marketing as well, and advertising.
Do I hear any questions or a motion?
Public motion, we accept the Washunga Days Sales Tax Grant.
Okay. Go ahead, hear a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any questions about this grant? Okay. We have a, we need to vote on, okay, I'm just going to say all those in favor. All those in favor of the Washunga Day grant as recommended by the Sales Tax Grant Committee in the amount of $19,000? Okay?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries six zero. Okay, next, Council Grove Pride Committee.
The Council Grove Pride Committee requested $10,000 in sales tax grant funding. The Sales Tax Grant Committee voted to recommend the approval of the request to the city council. And theirs is for pot, trash cans, and planters for downtown, and then flowers for the Madonna.
Are there any questions concerning this grant?
Yes, so the public knows, and Angie can correct me on this, this is just for part of it, you're out, you're seeking for more funding for the...
Our total amount we're asking for is $28,600 from various foundations, and then we've had some funds per, we have our camp put forward.
Yeah, so Mark...
And I did get approval from DAR on the Madonna.
Good.
On page 47, she has a pretty good breakdown of where they've asked for funding from, so...
I think it's interesting, the planters on 46, that's something we've had a lot of troubles with, is keeping them watered. We're hoping to do a drop and insert that'll have, keep some moisture in the bottom of those pots, so that they don't dry out so often, because that is difficult to keep those watered. So, any questions, any other questions? Okay, do I hear a motion concerning the pride grant?
Still moved.
Okay.
Okay. With Mark.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Been moved and seconded to approve the recommended grant in the amount of $2,000 to the Pride Committee for pots and downtown trash cans and beautification. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. They both say aye? I can't, I can't raise my...
They're good, yep.
Okay. Motion carries six zero. Okay, for the Rotary Club?
Mark, you want to do this one?
This is, again, just part of what the funding that Rotary is going to have to raise for a project. We bought a historic wagon to place in, we're hoping to place it in Krem Park, you know what is Council Oak Park. Part of that is relocating a veterans memorial that is in that park. The plan is to work with the American Legion of VFW to move that monument with the tank over here in Benai Smithfield to enhance the veterans memorial here in town. And then, this money, like I say, I think the total is around $36,000 that we believe that the entire project's going to cost the Council Grove Rotary Club to do. We're going to build a, some sort of a shelter to put the wagon into and pour concrete and so on. This is a fairly close, probably as close a wagon as you can to a wagon that was used on the Santa Fe Trail, the one that we own now by the bridge. In fact, part of this money will go to repair that wagon, too. That wagon is in horrible shape, and it needs some attention, too. This is very un-rotary-like for us to ask for money from other people, but, but civic clubs have changed. You know, there's just not a lot of people in them anymore, and, and we try to put everything we raised back into the community, but, but that's why we're asking the city.
Did I see, maybe I missed it, did you guys have another spot that you're thinking of going for the rest of the funds?
No, it's all going into that development of moving the monument that's there, developing the memorial or the structure for putting the wagon in and the repairs of the wagon we already have.
No, I understand that, but what I was wondering is, you're asking for $6,000 and the total project's $31,770. So are you just asking for the grants other places?
Yes, we're going to seek, we're going to go out and try to seek more funding. We have some money, you know, we're not very wealthy. We spent a lot of money on that trail between the railroad bridge and Third Street. That basically bankrupted us when we did that project for Rotary.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, do I hear a motion concerning the Sales Tax Grant Committee of Recommendation for the Council Grove Rotary in the amount $6,000?
I move we...
I'd make the motion there, Mr. Jason.
Okay. You want a second?
I'll second.
Sharon? Been moved and seconded to approve the Council Grove Rotary grant for $6,000. All those in favor?
All abstained.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, five to abst, one abstention. Motion carries. Okay. And Historic Preservation Corporation, Nick?
They requested $20,000 in sales tax grant funding. The Sales Tax Grant Committee voted not to recommend the approval of the grant request to the city council of, to the city council.
Any questions concerning this?
I think there ought to be some clarification on that, that they asked for use as a matching...
Yep, use as a matching, and we've also already given them about $32,000 for the project from sales tax grant funding. So, that was in the past, but we have given money to the project already.
Okay. And do we even need to vote on that one?
No, it's just a formality.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. Well, next we have the Benai Smithfield, later snacks, track, concrete options. I think we have a thing in our, in front of us about that?
Yeah, it's probably easier to look at, trying to figure it out. So, Mark, Larry, and I, along with Aaron Dobie, met with Tony Stacker from Creek Construction over there last Thursday, and we, regarding this, and we, basically, he gave a few different options and then cost for us on what the different things could cost. Obviously, the council approved $16,000. Obviously, the council approved $16,000 for the project. After we got to looking at it, there was some issues with ADA compliance. We had to add 10 foot on each side of what would be on page two, the beige area, in order to be in compliance with ADA compliant CD. So, that was added on, and then if you look through the packets, there's three different options on what we can do. I think eventually what we want to do, and what I would recommend just doing and just getting done with it because we save about $1,000 during the project all at once, is the first option. The school district is putting $45,000 into their bleachers they're gonna put over there. So, I don't think it's out of reason for the city to make it look nice over there.
So, the first option is on page two, right?
The first, yeah, so this page one goes with page two. And then the other ones have a cost with what's shaded in there. But, there's a combo price for doing this one, which saves you about $1,000 on the total project of page one to.
This also prevents leaving small square areas that will likely be a problem to take care of.
Yeah, and the other thing is you can make an area to put picnic tables and people go to snack shack and get a drink or whatever over there.
Putting her in there.
I think the end goal, from what we've talked about, we want to eventually make that area so you can't drive through there. With snack shack being in it, it doesn't need vehicles driving right next to the snack shack or anything like that with the bathrooms and things like that, so.
In most, in today's ball fields that I've been to, you know, they're developing an area that is similar to what this is, you know, a safe, a safe area for children to be around and getting the cars in a dedicated parking lot. And that's a problem that we have at Benai Smithfield. We have, they're parking everywhere, you know, and they're driving where they shouldn't be driving. And in the past, Councilman Blosser and I, when we first started these, this project 10 years ago, that was our, one of our long-term goals was to get those cars away from the bathrooms and the snack shacks to where the kids could feel safe, you know, moving around. And then, for the folks that haven't been there, to the right of the snack shack on this diagram, that is where, where the snack shack actually is. So, that would get some concrete out in front of where you would get your drinks and, and your snacks and so forth.
Where, I forgot, where is the entrance to the restroom, is that?
There's one on each side towards the back, towards the middle back.
Oh, okay.
And at the very end, then you have the referee's room and then you have.
Remember that plan?
Yeah, utility room.
So, is there not gonna be any sidewalk around the restroom?
There's a sidewalk around it. They're connecting to.
It's already there?
Yes, there's about a, I don't know, five or six, five foot.
Yeah, I think about five foot.
About a five or five, all the way around.
Yeah.
Yes. So, we're connecting, we're connecting to.
This just leads to that?
Yes.
So, this is all the concrete, the blue and here is all the.
Right, those are the suggested, on that one and then on the other ones it's pink, but.
And they have a pricing option, so.
I mean, we're getting forty-some thousand dollars worth of free bleachers out of this. This is almost like a matching grant where we, you know, when we get something, we get, we invest in it, we get something in return.
But this also includes all the concrete under the bleachers, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, I think it makes sense, especially given what construction costs are doing, why wouldn't we want to get it done, get it cleaned up and get it done?
It's concrete, go up, rebar, cost of labor.
The only comment I'd like to make to the council and everyone that participated in this is the fact that these drawings should have been made prior to them coming to the council and asked for a not-to-exceed amount of money so that they knew what they were doing. ADA stuff is not automatic. Anything that takes tax money with new construction is ADA required. And I would think that District 417 and everyone involved in this should have been aware. The snack shack became one of those ADA issues. It had to make sure it was compliant also. So, rather than throwing dollar signs out there before they even have an accurate estimate of what the project's gonna be, what it's gonna look like or cost, I would think in future times, we need to have a plan before we ever do those approve up to amounts for construction.
Yeah, I think, if I remember the conversation correctly, Mark brought up the fact that we're gonna look at different options while we were over there, which is what we did. Just see what, see what we can get for $16,000.
Yeah, right, but we didn't even have a drawing of the first option.
Right, because we had never met with Tony.
Of the bleachers, anything, they didn't have a drawing of the first option.
Yep, so, yeah, that's, all that stuff.
And we talked with the design for the bleachers that day, Doby and I were over there. I remember that. Okay. They hadn't discussed the ADA requirements for the concrete around these bleachers until just when we were there that day. What I'm saying is in the future, before we do this, all of that should have been taken care of before they came in to ask for funds to do it. Project modifications is one thing, but this, there were no drawings.
And that's a reasonable request that.
Okay, that's.
That was better preparation.
That's right, preparation should have been a lot better.
Right.
My only other question is down at the bottom, specific exclusions. Is there anything down there that council or city needs to be aware of that we will be contributing in addition to the 22,440?
All we're doing is hauling off the extra dirt, which we would do anyways. I would, I would pay them to haul dirt.
Yeah, I was more curious about the surveying, staking, laying out.
No, he said, on that particular day, he said that they would do all that. They would, they would, they would stake it, they would.
Okay, the only reason I say that, that's not what it says on this piece of paper.
Well, he, he said.
He said they're excluding that.
Yeah, he said that, he said they're gonna do all, the city's not doing any of it for me. All we're doing is hauling off the dirt and stuff that's left over.
Okay, I just wondered because the way this piece of paper is written, it says they're not going to include that in their pricing of 22,440.
Yeah, you want, you want, give me a minute, I can call Tony.
Well, I think a lot of that material that we're gonna be moving away for the concrete, I think will just get relocated into the parking lot right there.
Yeah, the material is not an issue, it's, it's already up here, yes, the other things up here.
Yeah, it's like the polishing, the stain, the.
Yeah, see, the hauling off is what they're doing about the city.
You wouldn't polish it and you wouldn't stain it, so, so, those are the things you would do.
How about the testing inspections?
Joint ceiling.
That all be everything?
Those, yeah, I mean, you.
Testing, but the survey and inspections and.
It does say form prep and four, all the options, which.
Yeah, four hundred, yeah, so.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify the point that the city is not gonna be involved with any more additional costs due to the surveying of the project.
The bowlers?
Other than, not the concrete, not concrete work. Anything we do with the material, we take out, that's ours, that's our deal, Mark. See what I'm saying?
Sure, yeah, I see it.
Not worried about that, but I want to make sure we're not responsible for any of the survey.
Can you make sure you get the clarification on that?
I can, yeah, I mean, it's in the thing, they're gonna do all that, but I, I'm glad to get, get confirmation again.
I just hate to see that in writing on something.
Well, I can call Tony.
And surveying and staking, my.
There wouldn't be a surveying, they went over there and measured and marked everything. That's how I came up with the drawings that you see in front of you, so.
I think that, you know, there's a, there's a great opportunity to use this company in the future for bidding other jobs that we, you know, that we might have coming up. We're gonna have a lot of concrete work to do.
Sure.
At the amphitheater. And, you know, some of the companies we have here in town are so busy doing other things that we can't do it. And it's always been the councils, since I've been on here, that if a local firm is even a little higher, we go with them. But, but this was not even close on this one.
That's correct.
So.
And this is where the, the topper part of that page two is where the parking is primarily.
Right, right.
Yeah, we want to get, you know, again, Larry and I need to work on this because Larry's new on this committee, but, but our initial thought years ago was there's a big grassy area over here and develop this into a parking lot. And they'll come off of Union Street into the entrance here and then they'll go into the parking lot. And all this out in here won't, you know, people can walk around and not have to worry about getting run over by a car.
Be a good plan.
You know?
Is there a reason for, just because I'm asking, is there future things like for this, is the curb just part of?
Yeah, I was kinda wondering that too, that little curb that's.
I think he was just trying to make it so everything was not in a straight, maybe as well. Yeah.
It did look a little.
I just thought it was.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mayor.
I thought maybe there were plans to do something in the.
Yeah, I don't know why that's there.
Are you telling me I have to say it wrong?
His program, his drafting program.
It's a pretty big, great piece of concrete that is all of that. And just like this daddy-daughter day night, that's something that could possibly be done over there in the future.
Well, it's our plans to start holding, you know, having our city rec hold and, and next talk to Justin to get, start having tournaments on a regular basis. And, and our goal all along is to make our facilities, you know, keep up with the other communities around us to where we can hold tournaments and people will come to our community and get cash out of their pockets while they're here, you know? And this is a long-term investment. This isn't something that's gonna pay for itself overnight. But this is just another step to enhance our community, another piece of the puzzle that makes our community better, you know?
What will be underneath the bleachers, I mean, not bleachers, but the white, is that going to be like?
It's all concrete.
This is concrete?
Mm-hmm.
Here, all where the white is too?
Mm-hmm.
Not just the gray part?
So, the beige part, that's the bleachers concrete and then this blue part is the additional concrete that we.
Okay, that's good, I was worried about that. Looks like a lot of concrete, yeah. Any more questions? Do I hear a motion?
I would make that motion.
Okay.
Which plan are you approving?
I would move that we accept the $22,440 for concrete work at Benai Smithfield. That will, and with that will include acceptance of the USD 417 gift of bleachers.
Okay, and which fund?
Infrastructure.
Okay, it's been moved and, yes.
Just one question, how's the infrastructure fund setting?
Yeah, it's been, the only thing we've spent out of that, you start the year 200,000 paid Washington Street, which was 53,000, so there's $147,000 in it.
Okay, minus this, okay.
Minus this, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the 2204, $22,440 plan for concrete over at Benai Smithfield and to accept the gift of the bleachers from the 417. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries six zero. When will that be?
Soon as I give him the approval, they can have it done by, they're gonna have it done in a couple of weeks. So, I told him I'd let him know tomorrow morning what the council decided to do, which option.
Okay, good.
And he said they can get on it right away and get it knocked out.
So, it'll be ready for the season?
He actually did some work for Keith and they showed up and it's a pretty good little spot where they poured and Keith and, you know, I went over there and looked at to see their work and they did really good work, but they just got there about nine o'clock on Friday and were out there about 6:30 that evening, done, so.
Came back first thing the next morning, saw cut it, cleaned it up. I couldn't have been happier, they did a really nice job.
Good.
We talked to him about some of the concerns about making sure we had good drainage. That's been a big issue at Benai Smithfield, trying to get the water off the field and then getting it, and then getting it away. And he felt very confident that he could, you know, float it to where the water would get away, so.
That's good.
I think we'll hold it for that.
We will, I'll make sure I reiterate that when they get ready to do the project.
And we don't, just, just, I'm gonna throw one more thing out here, we don't need any places where we're going to be able to secure like a cover or anything like that over there, like we have with this wave pool.
Well, eventually, I think that's the plan, but you can come in later and cut holes in the concrete, set poles and things like that.
Okay, I didn't know if that was something that.
We brought that up to him over there, he said he can do that now or he can do it later, it doesn't matter, it's the same process.
I'm saying we're going to, but if that came up, yeah.
Well, we actually talked about that.
That was another long-term plan that we had talked about years ago, that putting some sort of a shade netting or canvas type of thing like a swimming pool or that. It can get pretty warm over there.
Yeah, if anybody wants to see it or work hard, I'll gladly show you my driveway.
All right, we're ready for governing body comments. We're gonna start with Nick.
I think I've talked enough. The only thing I talked about, what you needed to bring up was Valley Street and the possibility of delays and things going down Valley Street, starting tomorrow, but other than that, the guys are moving along down the Riverwalk, they poured the footing for the stairs, Jeff Blosser and the city crews did that. City guys are down there packing dirt today, getting ready to set another row of seating. The plan is to have that done by, the seating done by probably the middle of next month, into this month, somewhere around there. Jeff Blosser, I talked to him today, he's gonna give me the bid sheets for the concrete work so we can have bids by the next council meeting so we can get that done.
Excellent.
So, that should get plenty of time for whoever decided to get in here to get that done before June 1st. So, that way it's usable for Washanga Days.
Great.
And I don't know that the whole council has seen it or not, but the Riverwalk Committee approved some really nice solar lights for the sites to go down, so.
Well, I saved, I think it was $40,000 to run all the conduit and wiring to put lights on the stairs.
Yeah.
The solar lights cost is about $3,800, so there's a big cost savings.
Big savings.
And those lights are pretty cheap to replace. If they go out or they stop working, they're not expensive to replace. I actually have some on the back stairs of my house that are very similar to what.
Oh, they're safer, they look nicer.
They do.
So, we've been very fortunate. Jeff, talk right back. Okay, Phil.
Okay, Mayor, thank you, Phil.
Thank you. Jason?
The only thing I've got is happy anniversary, Mayor.
Thank you.
About fifty years.
We're heading toward 100, I guess. Okay, how about you, Mr. Burner?
I'm okay, nice, thanks for asking.
Okay, Keith?
All I got is, I just think it's, again, I've said this before, but I think it's great to see all the action going on downtown. I had my dad out the other day, first time in a year, and he was just amazed at everything that's going on up and down main streets, all around Council Grove and coming out of isolation. It was a pretty big impact.
Oh, I'm sure.
Really impressed with everything that's going on in the community. I think, I think we got a lot of good things coming and I think we're very blessed to have people coming to the community that are willing to spend the money and, and I think it's an exciting time for Council Grove.
Okay, Mark?
Nick talked about getting the amphitheater ready for Washanga Days, but that won't be the first event held there. Michael Martin Murphy at Conser will be the weekend of the Flynn Hill, Symphony in the Flynn Hills.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's right, sorry.
Yeah.
My dates.
He's gonna be here on Friday night of that symphony, performing in our new amphitheater, so he'll, he'll get the one to, to do that.
What date is that, Mark?
The 11th.
Right.
And then the symphony's the next day on the 12th, South Council Grove.
And we're working, the Santa Fe Trail Associate, Santa Fe Trail 201 is one doing this, this event. And then, we're talking about having all the historic sites open during that weekend for all those people who are gonna be here, you know, they sell 5,000-plus tickets for that symphony. And then, we, we need to try to get the trolley out running that weekend too. Should be, should be good for the community. And then also, we were talking about infrastructure money, I talked to Nick about this. We've been putting this off, but we need to start looking into the Belfry project and get that before the side of Belfry falls off, the street section there, that's all hauled out.
It was originally scheduled for last year, obviously with COVID, some of that stuff just didn't get done, so.
And then I have a request to the street committee, whenever you start looking at chipping seal streets, in my ward, I would like you to consider. in my ward, I would like you to consider Chautauqua Street. It's just getting worse and worse and worse, it's gated really bad. And I think before we lose all that asphalt, we probably need a shot of chip and seal on it. You know, nothing against Ward One, but we've hit, hit that ward pretty hard over the last three years and I'd like to see something done up in my neighbor, in my ward too, so I just ask you to, to look it over.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, Larry?
I have nothing to see, I did notice though, that the county has moved their command module trailer away from the fire station, so.
Yeah, I talked to Sean, he went actually over there and looked at it and let the sheriff's department know that the guy shaped what it was in. So, it is no longer there. I think Blackledge, former big chief Blackledge was storing it there, I think it's his trailer as the emergency management. So I think he had it hooked on and hauled it out of there.
Okay, I just noticed that it was gone this week, so somebody had to take care of the tires, so it is movable.
Yep, so.
But other than that, I have nothing.
Okay, Sharon?
Well, just comment about what he said about downtown, it is just very exciting to see what's happening and all the energy that's being put into everything and it just makes one feel good to see all of these things happening, so. And congratulations and that's all.
Okay. Okay, I have a few things. Anybody else have anything before I go? Okay, I have a couple of appointments to make. First, I'd like to appoint, and these are all for the fire department. I would like to appoint Jesse Blaser as fire chief, Bo Bell as Captain One, Tyson Stevenson as Captain Two, Treasurer John Scares, Secretary Jared Coke. And then I would also like to appoint five board members, and these have been, all of these have been voted on by the fire department. So, that's where this is coming from. Five board members would be Steve Crichton, Brian Brown, Bo Bell, John Scares and Jack Tyner. And I would welcome a confirmation of those appointments. Motion to confirm them, I guess I should say.
So, who?
Okay.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, six to zero. Thank you. That's my number one thing. Number two, I will reiterate what you all said about downtown. I don't know if anybody has been down the alley and looked at the back of some of those buildings, but there's some neat stuff going on behind too, so I hope that everybody gets a chance to take a look. There's, the breweries coming, all of them are coming along. They're all painting and beautifying and it's just great to see all this, all this going on, so. There's some buildings that have sold and I think we're, in the future, we're going to work on housing. We are, just like all the rest of Kansas, and all the rest, actually the rest of the United States, housing shortage. So, we'll start to work on that a little bit, so. Okay, there being nothing else, motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Y'all stay safe.